Okay, I have six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting for March tenth. And at this time, the prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Jeffrey Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to come together and gather and do the work of the city of New Bern. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct our words and our actions. In your name we pray, amen.
Please show me the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
President.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw. Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
President.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. This time we'll go into requests and petitions of citizens. And our first request tonight is from Reverend Ethel Sampson.
Praise the Lord, good evening. Is it Ethel Sampson? Ten thirty-eight Sampson Street.
Ethel, would you, would you, yeah, thank you. We want to make sure we can hear you.
Reverend Ethel Sampson, ten thirty-eight Sampson Street in New Bern, North Carolina. I just had to say how overwhelming it was during the time for the cemetery plaques at Saint Peter's Church. And we got them, the whites outnumbered the blacks. But the welcome committee was Mayor Outlaw, Alderman Lady Bingle, and Our Lady Best. And it was outstanding. And the remarks that Mayor Outlaw gave, they were so wonderful. And the service by Reverend Daniels was superb. And the people received that very well. And I just had to say how happy and pleased I am for Reverend Robert Johnson, Mr. Bean Waugh, and the people, the caring people that were so concerned for what happened to us. But I still haven't forgotten Stanley White. I had to say this, and I really thank y'all very much.
Well, we thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I just say something? Ms. Sampson, just very quickly, I want to congratulate you on being named the Community Fabric Award for Leadership in our Community. I've been a winner before, and I'm so proud to have you in my ranks. So, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, our next petition and request is from Alderman Victor J. Taylor.
My name is Victor Taylor. I live at twenty-eight seventeen Walter Drive. And thank God for allowing me to be here today. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I do want to ask the mayor, if you don't mind, turn the clock on, because I've got three items that I need to talk to, talk about, and I want to make sure I stay within the guidelines of the four minutes. Again, he said Alderman Taylor, I'm a former Alderman for the city. I say that because as I get down my notes, you'll see. The first item is first, I want to thank the board for allowing us to have our Black History Month Parade. Thank you all for what you all done and continue to do. Thank the city manager for his support. And I want to thank Mark, uh, Mark Mantain for his support and his staff, Chief Board, Chief Summers for his support, Mr. Director Charles Bouchard, I don't like names, I don't like messing up people's names, and also Mr. Foster, as well as Steve Anderson, Jackie Dees, and Patrick Mercado, and the Traffic Division, Sergeant Hargett, and Lieutenant Conway for a great job they've done. I'm gonna give you a little history on the parade. The Black History Month Parade has been going for four years now. We've been having a huge success. The first year, we had a little over three hundred vehicles. The second one, we had a little over two hundred and some vehicles. And this one here, we paired close to two hundred vehicles. So without you all's help, it wouldn't have been a success. However, I'm here for a reason. I've experienced some issues every year from parks and wrecks. And I'm up, not here, up to here. My, my committee is only like eight people. And we gonna, we want to do exactly what it takes. The reason why I said the former Alderman, the Alderman, because I've been on the board and I know what it takes to run a parade. So I've been doing it and asking to get the information on how to do it. And every year, every year, right before the parade, something pops up. You didn't do this, you didn't do that. This year, Sergeant Hargett, myself, and Lieutenant Conway, we sat down for hours talking about the barricades. How many barricades you need to make this parade safe first? We came up with a number of fifty. We submitted it, they brought it back, and they said thirty-six. I spoke with Mr. Foster, I spoke with Lieutenant Conway again. He said, "Mr. Taylor, you need fifty." I said, "Yes, sir, we need fifty. We want this parade to be safe first." We submitted again to Mr. Veronica Maddox. Again, it was returned again with forty barricades. I didn't find out about that forty barricades from fifty to forty till the day before the parade. If I hadn't have been riding down Broad Street, I wouldn't have known that they had cut it again, second time, ten barricades. There were streets that was wide open. I asked for four barricades, they put one barricade. Now, it was not the staff. The staff showed me the map. The map has been altered to make it forty barricades instead of fifty. I don't know why. I think it's a personal, and all city of New Bern staff need to check their personal feelings at the door before they come to work. Because if I'm a former Alderman and I was getting treated this way for four years, what about a regular citizen? They don't know what to do, they just take it and leave. If a person does not want to do their job, they can retire, resign, whatever the case may be. I'm fed up to here, okay? I'm fed up here. That was, that was my time. All right?
That's my language, four minutes.
Okay, that wasn't my time. So, but that said, I need to make sure that our parade is treated fair, firm, and consistent across the board, just like any other parade or any other block and other street that happens in the city of New Bern. I am tired, we are tired. It's only eight people, we worked eight months putting this parade together. And we want to do it the right way, we just need the right directions. Don't come up with stuff after the fact and say, "Oh, you didn't do this, you didn't tell us. Give us a checklist, we'll go by." And that's what we do. Ms. Fonda goes there every year, gets the checklist, we check off what we do, and turn it in. The day before the parade, we get phone calls saying, "You didn't do this." Well, it's not on the checklist. If you don't know your job, retire, resign, quit, whatever you want to call it. So, we are fed up. I know you don't can answer, and I don't expect you to answer, but I would like for some action to be taken. I don't mind sitting on a board of meeting to hear this matters, but it needs, something needs to be done. Switching the hat, Muffet's. I'm the chairman for the Prostate County Support Group of Craven Jones and Pamlico Counties. Every year, we come out to the Muffet's. We giving information to save people lives, okay? But every year, we have to pay a hundred and sixty dollars to sit out there to give out life-saving information. We're not a profit, we're not making any money, but we have to pay. That's our appropriation funds. When I was on the board, we give Swiss Baas so much money. I don't know what it is now, so I ain't gonna say no numbers. If it's changed, fine. But right now, we should not be paying, nobody should not be paying that type of money to be, to give out life-saving information. I don't think it'd be the app. I'd like to talk about that as well. The second, third thing is, and everybody heard it lately, it's sweet potatoes. A great idea, a great deal. It's a blessing to the community. But it's about the presentation, how it was given out, how it's given out. We need to work on that. Don't drop it on the ground, because you got rodents, worms, cat feces, cat urination, dog urination, kids playing on it, and then you want someone to take it home, wash it off, and feed it to the kids. Thank God no one's got sick as of yet, but it's a possibility to happen. If a thousand people get blessed with sweet potatoes and one gets sick, I don't want those potatoes. So that's what I got about to say about that. But I would like to sit down and speak with anybody on any one of those items at any time. Again, thank you all for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this time we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Stevens, eye number nine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number nine is Presentation of Longevity Certificates. As you know, we do this twice a year where we recognize employees at five-year increments within their employment here with the city. There's a roster that's been included in your packet of all the employees who are eligible to receive a service certificate for the period of July through December of 2019. Some of these employees are here tonight at the meeting, and we want to present them with their certificates. So at this point, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kropowski, who's here for Ms. Hayes, to come up, and we're gonna recognize those employees. And we're gonna do something a little bit different tonight. And I'll kind of hit this up real quick. Obviously, there's a lot of concern and scare out there regarding the coronavirus and a lot of things that are going on nationwide and worldwide, actually. And a lot of, a lot of things are shutting down. Even the governor today declared state of emergency for the state of North Carolina regarding the coronavirus. Number one, not to put everybody at, you know, in, in a, an alert status or a panic status. I mean, typically, the states will do that to expedite funding and resources from the federal government if they're needed. Oftentimes, they happen in, in preparation for storms, they happen in preparation for other types of major events that may be impacting a, a state. So when it comes to the federal resource money and emergency-type situations, the state, the, the governor will issue a state of emergency to allow that funding to be available. But going back to what we're looking to do a little bit differently, some of the, the recommendations that come out from CDC and World Health Organization are for appropriate contact with individuals and, and the way they approach people during this time period and trying to minimize those impacts so that it reduces the spread of these particular viruses and even the flu that currently we have from year to year. Just so everyone knows, we're gonna be issuing information on our website. It will be posted where people can find the information. I urge you to go to reliable sources and not Facebook for your source feeds or your Instagrams or wherever. Go to the World Health Organization or the CDC or the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to get your information. They're gonna be the ones that will have the most accurate, most up-to-date information with regards to your concerns that you may have with regards to our, the coronavirus or, or the flu. So in lieu of us, which we typically ask the board to come down and shake hands with the, the members of our employees, we want to make sure and try to practice what we're preaching. So what we're gonna ask is, is I'm gonna hand off the certificates to our employees, and we're gonna ask them to line up and so that we can still get a picture of an employee recognizing them. And then, if you would, board, at that point, y'all can recognize them with a round of applause and everybody else within the audience that would do so. So we want to practice what we preach and also tell everyone that make sure and wash your hands, take care of yourself, avoid contact where it's unnecessary, and, and cover yourself whenever you're sneezing or coughing. So I don't know if you want to add anything else.
I have a question just for you. So you said there's gonna be information on our website. First of all, where, what, where does somebody find that?
Yes, we, so on our webpage, on our main, uh, main page, we have an Events and News Stories section. Under that Events and News Stories section, very top, we're gonna have a section for coronavirus updates. It's going to, I wish I had it, but it's already up. So it's, uh, so we've got that up currently. There's a dedicated page with a resource repository that you can go to. It links you to the CDC, the EPA, the World Health Organization, and the North Carolina Health and Human Services Department. It has multiple links in there. It talks about travelers' health, the everyday preventative actions, to their Facebook page, their Twitter page, their Instagram pages. We've got all those links ready to go, they're all up, so people can, can go to those and get the information that they're seeking. I will say, the city is not a specialist in epidemiology. So I would urge you, just like any other thing, to go to the people who are the professionals of those kinds of, of organizations and seek out their information there, contact their numbers. We do not have doctors, we do not have licensed physicians or physicians assistants that work for the city of New Bern. But we're going to try to do what we can to get the information out there and available to our citizens the best we can and provide them with that resource. So we've located those on our webpage, they are available, and it's in the News and Events Feed section. They can click on it, it's the top story in the News and Events Feed, and you can get to a link that provides all of that information that you seek.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, I'm turning it over to Ms. Kropowski. She's got a list of the employees, and I'll hand it to the employees. If we would, the employees, whenever you get your award, if you'll come here and stand in front of the table, and then that, that way Colleen can get the picture whenever we've handed everybody their award. So thank you.
All right. Mr. Stevens, first, we'd like to begin with recognizing Kevin Rice with the Police Department for five years of valuable service with the city of New Bern. Next, we have David Graham Price with five years of valuable service with the Public Works Department for the city of New Bern. David Upchurch with the Police Department, ten years of valuable service with the city of New Bern. Tony Hawkins with the Public Utilities Department, Water Resources, and he has fifteen years of valuable service with the city of New Bern. Marquee Morrison Brown with the Police Department, fifteen valuable years of service. Timothy Poole with the Police Department, fifteen years of valuable service with the city. Dalton Gaskins, Public Utilities, Water Resources Department, who has twenty years of valuable service with the city of New Bern. We have James Lewis with Parks and Recreation Department. James has thirty years of valuable service with the city. And we are happy to have one of our retirees back tonight, Nancy Regelsberger. She had thirty years of valuable service with the city. She worked in the development. And did we miss anyone? Okay, thank you.
Might take me a second, sir. Sage, do it.
Want me to move over?
Or would you stand up?
Yeah.
All right, one, two, three, you wanna take a couple? Good enough, so thank you. Congratulations.
We have a motion to do a short recess for Professor Professors.
I make a motion, but we recess for five minutes.
Second. Most of the second, anyway. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna get, get going again here. We missed a, uh, request of petition assistance. Ms. Nixon, would you like to come forward?
My name is Katrina Nixon. I live at two oh seven Holly Street here in New Bern. I was born and I was raised here. So my concern is, and I know that y'all are trying to get Stanley White to be fixed, um, as I look at the gym and I look at the ground of it, it's always been a wet area. So with me, um, now that it has got footed out, I kind of look at the spot of days in, where it used to be, to be commercial, it's property, I understand that, to also be in between Trent Court and Craven Terrace could be a little more convenient for the children. As I look at it, because when it was, we're sitting it now, children from Trent Court had to walk from Trent Court to Craven Terrace. I mean, they still had to cross the highway to get across to that gym. And it caused a lot of issues with a lot of, um, family members. It caused a lot of issues with the guy at the gym, because I used to hear them say, "Why did your mother let you walk to this gym by yourself?" So I really figured that if it was sitting in that middle area and if it was cost a lot of cheaper money to have it built there, to me, by being an open space, it would be good. The police come through the area of, you know, driving back and forth, where, like I said, it'd be seen. They can see in the back, they have the lights and everything back there, it wouldn't be too much of an issue. I also look at the community as far as the black neighborhood community, because I look at the fact that as hurricanes has came through over the time, um, New Bern has gotten over five million dollars the time a hurricane came through. And I look at downtown got built, um, the Conventio Center got built up, Hilton Hotel got built up. There was nothing there, there used to be little carnivals that we used to have. And as the money started coming through, the neighborhoods was going down. So I look at it as to take the money, and I understand that y'all want to make New Bern to be this big tourist town, to, to build it up, to bring money in, but also the, the neighborhoods still got to get built. Regardless of the fact you want to make this part of town to look good, we still have the areas now with the houses, the city that's let it out, the landlords probably didn't have insurance on them, can't get them fixed. If they did, they probably didn't take the money and get it fixed. Is there any way that y'all can set it up where you can have those houses knocked down? Let Habitat for Humanity use those lands to build it up, to make the areas look a whole lot better and to not make it look so much in poverty? You know, because y'all have the power to do so. And my thing is this, um, what can, what you can make it look good, we can try to keep it looking good. But if it's long as it keeps looking down, it's gonna stay that way. So I really feel like to speak on behalf of the community that, yeah, we need this gym, because, you know, I have a grandchildren, I have a, a husband that goes over to have to call every time he wanted to go play ball. He got us up an appointment basically just to go play ball. And my grandson wants to play ball, he gotta go in Craven Terrace, but on a day that it's raining, he can't play ball. So that disappoints him. So I really feel that this, this gym needs to come up for these children, because really they need it. They really need to be out, and they need to be exercising. I really do. So I'm, I'm, I'm here expressing that to the children, for the, for the children, for the community, and the fact that I know that New Bern can do this. It's all in according to how the Aldermen can get together and really stand for the community. If y'all say y'all for it, y'all got, you know, voted in for this, stand and help these people get this done.
Okay. We appreciate your, your comments, and we'll certainly all of us take them under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Stevens, would you go to eye number ten?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for two oh eight Daniel Street. Jimmy Mangold has submitted an offer of nine thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of two oh eight Daniel Street. The tax value of the half-acre lot with a single-wide mobile home is eighteen thousand dollars, and the offer represents more than fifty percent of the value. The city and county acquired the property jointly through a tax foreclosure in August of 2019. If the property is sold for the initial offer, the county will receive approximately six thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-five cent of the proceeds, and the city will receive approximately two thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and fifteen cent. These estimates take into account the cost of publishing the legal advertisement. There's a memo and pictures along with some information in your packet. If you have any questions, we're happy to help.
Support have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for two oh eight Daniel Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, eye number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, real quick, wanted to make sure, so the pictures, I know that was kind of brought up at one, did the pictures help with this?
Yes.
As far as you can see what the lot was and everything, so we'll start doing that from this point on, just want to make sure that y'all are okay with that. Item number eleven, Mayor, is a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for fifteen zero nine Washington Street. Robert Carter has submitted an offer of three thousand dollars for the purchase of fifteen zero nine Washington Street with a, which is vacant quarter-acre lot. The offer represents fifty percent of the tax value. The board voted at its February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty meeting to unfreeze this lot and authorize staff to accept the bid. The property was acquired by the city through tax foreclosure in October of 2006. There's a memo that's included in your packet, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Lord have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for fifteen oh nine Washington Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries, eye number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is a resolution approving a contract with Moffett and Nickel for services related to a resiliency and hazard mitigation plan. As you know, the city issued requests and qualifications for the development of a resiliency and hazard mitigation plan. It's been discussed for some time now. Goal of the plan is to build the capacity of New Bern community to avoid, prepare for, withstand, recover, and build back better following disastrous events with specific focus on underserved and historic communities. In response to the RFQ, we had nine submissions that were received from various firms. Moffett and Nickel was selected to be the most qualified firm, and there's a contract that has been negotiated. The proposed amount for the cost of services is not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars. There's a memo that's included in your packet. And also, I will add that we are happy to announce that it is, that, that, because of that amount, it'll be fully funded as far as our resiliency plan through grant funds that we've received.
Okay, support have questions or comments?
Just glad it's getting done. I make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a contract with Moffett and Nickel for services related to a resiliency and hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Second, yeah, Alderwoman Harris. At this time, some roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries, eye number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirteen is a resolution approving an amendment to a, a letter of engagement for professional services, FEMA with Disaster Recovery Services LLC. Following Hurricane Florence in 2018, the city entered into two agreements with Disaster Recovery Services LLC, provide professional services. One agreement covered services related to FEMA claims, and the second was related to insurance claims. It requested that the board authorize a letter of engagement amending the scope of work for the FEMA services to include debris removal and repairs to approximately sixty-six miles of drainage ditches and waterways. Based upon the expanded scope of work, DRS estimates that the updated project cost for FEMA recovery will not exceed one million nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for their consulting fees. So happy to answer any questions. And we also have Cory and Sam here from Disaster Services LLC. If y'all have any questions for them with where we are in the recovery process.
I think it's very important for the public to know that, you know, if, if we are to approve this, I really, the very contemporous work that they've done so far now, if you could just kind of summarize succinctly what, what this fine group of consultants have done for us and the kind of money that we, we've been able to gen, they've been able to generate, along with, uh, Mark, Margaret Shields and others that are bringing hope and grants and revenue sources for us to bring our city back. This is not just bricks and mortar, this is the mental welfare of our city, along with the health of our city. So I just, I just don't want to kind of adopt this thing and not kind of update the public on where we are.
Sure, and I completely understand that, Mayor. It's a large sum of money, but I'm happy to say that, you know, when we first started this process, you know, we told you, okay, well, what's our, what's our exposure, what's our damages here for the city of New Bern? We, I think we estimated somewhere between ten and fourteen million dollars of damage initially. Through the assistance with Disaster Services LLC and their information, their expertise, we're projecting this recovery efforts to potentially bring about recovery numbers in around of almost sixty million dollars. almost $60 million. Um, just alone, the, the, the 80 miles, 66 miles of ditches and, and recovery work that we're talking about here, I mean, you're looking at, uh, close to a $30 million project in and of itself. You're, you're looking at an $8 million recreation facility. You're talking about multiple other facilities and projects that were submitted, uh, uh, for recovery. And I know Corey, he's got a very succinct list of all of those. Uh, but, you know, when we, when we initially started doing some scoping work and the losses that we potentially looked at, at impacting this city, it was 10 to 14 million. Now it's 60 million. So, uh, they have been, they're worth their weight in gold in my opinion, uh, and, and the assistance that they've had with filing extensions, which is also a process. And we were 18 months out from when the storm occurred. It's been a very arduous process in my mind, uh, working through, uh, the FEMA, uh, federal system, uh, and trying to get the funding for some of these things, uh, to the point where we had, uh, the, the FCO and, and some other individuals from Region Four here visiting with us to have some discussions about some of the issues that we were having. Uh, so these guys were with by our sides, uh, the entire time. Uh, so their services rendered have been very, very much, uh, beneficial to this city and some of the recovery that we have had and the amount of money that we are receiving that otherwise we may have left on the table. Um, so, uh, at this point, Corey, you may want to add a couple of other things.
Before we make any comments, I want to just, um, um, kind of not necessarily piggyback on that, but back up to item 12, um, you and I went to Asheville and we met with the collateral group and others. And, um, I think the first thing that we realized is it is, is it didn't stop at the city limits, the needs, uh, or countywide, the regional. Uh, I think you and I were going, what, March 18th to Jacksonville, going to meet with our alliance group of cities and units, counties, et cetera. So, um, thank you to Mark Shields and others that we have received grant money to do this study. And the study again will not stop at the city, city limits of New Bern. And, uh, we just reach out to state senators, uh, general assembly representatives, uh, everybody from John Bell and Gallusville on back to the coast. And, uh, we want them, all of them to be a part of this alliance. And all this money, all this revenue opportunities for, for not only New Bern, but our sister cities and towns, Pollacksville and Trenton got hit so hard. Um, this is, this is a collaboration of all of us working together. And so these two items are so important. And Corey, thank you so much. If you will, go ahead.
First I'd say, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Stevens, for, um, uh, the, uh, the generous compliments that you've given our company. Um, we have worked very hard here. Um, the, uh, the one correction that I would like to make is it's 61 million, not 60 million. Um, and, um, the, uh, the beauty of this is, is that, uh, under the FEMA program, uh, they allow you, uh, management costs to manage the grant. And, uh, uh, in discussions that I've had with Mr. Stevens and, uh, the total projected dollar values is, is that, uh, uh, the, the contract with us will, uh, end up costing you no money because it will be funded by FEMA as part of the management cost.
And could you kind of elaborate a little bit about what New Bern will see capital improvement wise and, uh, everything for emergency operations, reimbursement, fleet of land? Uh, just?
There are, there are many, uh, I mean, I could go in. There's a long list of things. We are pursuing, uh, uh, many mitigation items that are not included in these totals at this point in time. Uh, they are, they're, they're a process. It usually comes towards the, uh, the end of it. Uh, one could consider Stanley White Center and, uh, the, uh, the old PB, the old BP building could be considered mitigation because of their elevation, but they're, they're not part of the mitigation program for FEMA per se. Um, the, um, uh, we've, we've basically, uh, been able to, uh, uh, to, to document and show to FEMA the, you know, the actual damages that you had, which is why the numbers are greatly increased. Um, the, uh, the mitigation opportunities that are going to be available to you are, are, are going to be extensive, uh, for the drainage system. We've already identified many of those for the permanent work, uh, to be, uh, to be calculated in, which could be, uh, increasing the size of some of your pipes and culverts. And, uh, these are all additional monies, uh, that would potentially be coming into the city that are not yet calculated.
And one thing that I don't know, Mr. Stevens could, could break this down just a little bit, or you can do it for us. I know that all of us will be interested in knowing what share of the pie we can get in New Bern to 500 and some million dollars that, that's going to be available. It's going to be community block grant money. Uh, I think maybe 20 to 30 million of it's going to be buyout and elevations. So it's not like we're going to get all of it, but I mean, we've already done pretty good. And could anyone of you two elaborate on that just a little bit for the public?
Corey may have some more information, but I do know that, uh, between Mr. Ruggieri and his staff, uh, working with, uh, the, the state, uh, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, uh, they have issued, I think it was 500 some million dollars that they were, um, and, and so it's a large sum of money. Obviously that's going to get divvied out between a lot, you know, 25, 30 coastal counties and, and probably 200 municipalities in eastern North Carolina. But, but, uh, we, we have submitted, um, long ago, our share of the buyouts and, um, and also the elevation properties. Um, and we have that list. Uh, those were provided back to us by the state. We were awaiting and may still be awaiting, I don't know, the directions and how we wanted to move forward with the process. And as soon as we know that, obviously we will be conveying that to the citizens. But as you mentioned, Mayor, that, that is a sum of money that's also coming down that pipeline that is, even though it's, it sounds like a large, you know, sum in the end, but when it gets divvied out in all these municipalities, it, it, it starts becoming a lot smaller. But we are, we are, uh, in the process of, of working through several different things. Uh, we've had a grant, um, request or actually a, an application request for some time. Margaret submitted a long time ago that the state, uh, Office of Recovery and Resiliency has, uh, for funding a position, funding a vehicle for, uh, resiliency officer, uh, and, and things like that. Um, and I think a lot of the delay on that was more about setting up that program. As you know, that was an entirely new state organization department that was being set up from the ground up. A lot of those individuals, uh, were being taken and plucked from, uh, different departments within the state of North Carolina. And then they, I know they brought in some, some new individuals to assist with that. But, uh, we will definitely, uh, be doing our part to try to get as much of that money as we can, uh, through the CDVG, uh, DR funds and, and those funds that are being allocated by the state of North Carolina. And you may have some more information that you want
to share. And, uh, actually many of those programs are administered, uh, through, uh, the federal government, but not part per se of the, the FEMA process. Um, I know that there were certain dollars that were part of the FEMA PA process that I saw come across my desk. I don't remember the dollar value. I don't, um, it was, I think it was under 100,000. That was a different section of the PA process that apparently FEMA took one of these grant programs and, uh, and incorporated it into the FEMA public assistance part. Uh, but it's, it's part of, again, of the, of the buyout program, um, process. Uh, and in addition to the, uh, the FEMA, uh, end of it, uh, we, we have actually spent, uh, a fair amount of time negotiating with your insurance company as well. And, uh, you know, I'm proud to say that, you know, you did receive the full $1 million worth of, uh, flood insurance coverage, uh, under your flood policy. And, uh, because of the, the damages that we're able to document, uh, in excess of that, um, you have ended up with, uh, no deductible under your wind claim, uh, for all of your city buildings, which is, uh, which is another accomplishment.
And one, one thing we want to be careful about as, as a forevolving, uh, I know that in some situations, I don't have an example right in front of me. I've read some in the past couple of years where some counties that were not actually as negative, negatively affected, were able to get into the, those, those funds and do projects in other counties. And again, we just want to make sure we are aggressive and robust in our, uh, our desire to, to go after this funding. Is that, can you elaborate on that?
Oh, you've been aggressive.
Sir?
You've been very aggressive.
I'm just saying there are other areas that, well, I mean, New Bern was severely affected by this. And there are other areas that obviously were severely affected, but there are other areas that this go around were not. But the funding is not necessarily, um, zeroed in, um, to the most effective. It can, it, it's, it's really based on how aggressive, uh, a city is at going for the funding.
I, I would say, Mayor, that, that unfortunately sometimes, um, these types of, of funding mechanisms oftentimes have other disasters that get tagged to them, i.e. Matthew or, uh, the fires in western North Carolina. Basically, it, if they've had a disaster within the last two or three years, oftentimes, sometimes this funding gets coupled together at the federal level and sent down to the state. So it makes those other, uh, entities eligible. Unfortunately, the ones that happened prior to Hurricane Irene that may be tagged into some of these funds, uh, they may have projects that are shovel ready or further along in the process. And so therefore, and, and, and two, you got to think about the politics of funding that stuff statewide. I think there is an emphasis a little bit in eastern North Carolina and some of the issues that were experienced here with regards to flooding and the hurricanes. But it's still that, that, that funding, once the definitions are outlined as far as who the eligible entities are, that, that they're eligible to submit, just like the folks in eastern North Carolina will be in this particular funding. So I, I don't know the specific details about the eligibility.
Having said that, one thing I think would be generous on our part, for smaller towns like Pollacksville and Trenton that have had severe issues, you know, Lumber River is being dredged or cleaned and limb removal and those type things. And, you know, any way that we can help, uh, our small towns around here with some of the issues they've had that, that it doesn't necessarily cost our general fund, that we can get reimbursement as we're getting for the consultant that, that we have now. Um, I know, I, I know that the board would want the help because what's, what's hurting them is going to hurt us and vice versa.
And, uh, there, there is, uh, another program under FEMA. It's the, um, I think it's the 404 Assistance Program, which, uh, the state receives a, a block grant of money, uh, from FEMA for, uh, additional projects and mitigation, uh, over and above, uh, uh, that are, uh, that are, and it's a program that's administered, administered by the state and they turn around and select, uh, the, the projects that are submitted to them, um, to, to divvy up that money. Um, part of the, I think the problem with the city here is that we've been so successful with the, uh, programs, uh, within the 406 program and the mitigation that we haven't had or found the need for that, although we have had some discussions about that. And, uh, and, and that is an option for the future of, for any needs, uh, that might be unmet or, or anything that we can think of that would be, uh, eligible to participate in that program. We can throw, uh, the city's, uh, uh, request into the hat for that.
Okay, support have any?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens, with part of that, um, CDVG money you were speaking of, the, will some of that money be allocated for the, the project that, for the retention ponds, the stormwater retention ponds? Can some of that money be used for that purpose over in the Duffy Field?
I believe we did.
Over by the railroad tracks project?
So the detail, so essentially, uh, what, what he's saying is, is, is the, the program is so new, once again, uh, a lot of the funding, uh, streams have not been, I guess, clearly defined as far as what is eligible and what is not eligible. Obviously if we can seek to get free money or grant money or whatever to go build that stormwater pond, we will definitely seek that. Um, we're looking at potential, uh, CDVG monies at some point, possibly being a resource because we are an entitlement city. We get a certain amount of money each year that gets sent to us for, for CDVG processes. But ultimately, uh, CDVG DR funds could be, potentially be an option as well.
Yeah, just to add some clarification, I was a little vague. Um, there's certain, um, I guess, programs that are looking at being funded, like infrastructure improvements would be one of them. And they're allocating a certain amount of money for that. We could apply theoretically at this point, thinking that that would be an infrastructure project. So it may, it may work under something like that. But again, as Mark was saying, we don't have that level of detail yet. We're still going through the, uh, comment phase. Um, we do understand there's a large sum of money that's being allocated to different programs, um, residential, rental, infrastructure, things like that. Uh, once it's been, uh, once the comment period has ended, they come up and then they say, okay, we have a notice of funding availability. It was called a NOFA. And then we're allowed to apply underneath each one of those categories essentially. So I do, um, I'm anticipating that we, we would be able to, if we don't have it fully funded by other means by then, um, apply for funding underneath something like that.
Now, I, I'm not specifically speaking of the funds that the city usually receive yearly from the CDVG funds. I'm not speaking of those funds.
I understand.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And, uh, in addition to that, uh, with the, uh, with the permanent repairs to your drainage system that have just recently been completed to be evaluated and were submitted to FEMA, as part of that review process, the, uh, engineering firm that you had, uh, selected, uh, to do that has been instrumental in, in putting the mitigation, uh, program together. We've had various meetings with the Public Works Department. And, uh, one of the, uh, one of the key items that, uh, everyone has harped upon is, is that for every item that you have damaged, find some way to mitigate it so it doesn't happen in the future and, and, and avail yourselves to the, to the FEMA mitigation money that is available to you. And, uh, that has been a, a very high priority. I've, uh, seen many of the, uh, the, uh, the, the project, uh, that have come out that were submitted to FEMA. And, and nearly every one of them was tagged with a mitigation potential of some type. Um, and, uh, we are going to continue to work through that process, uh, to, uh, to make sure that, uh, you become more resilient in the future.
Well, this is a part of the motion, but I'm, I'm recommending to Alderman and the staff that we will document this with audio, you know, uh, taping of the whole process and particularly so that we have it for archive purposes to go back. And a lot of what we deal with daily is the unknown. Uh, I know that Mr. Montane and, uh, Alderman Kinsey now were out the other day physically looking at something and, and there was a simple solution of just bringing one ditch to another, right?
Absolutely.
So, um, I, I do encourage, uh, in the budget or whatever we need to do, that, that there's money that we well document when this, this money is spent. Cause this is historical, what's fixed to happen.
That's a great idea. I think we should document this.
Corey, also could you maybe give me a little information, um, on the actual, I know you, you really don't have anything to do with it once it gets to the state level, but at what point are they with the actual, uh, elevation and, and buyouts at this point? With FEMA?
I don't know that.
Do you know if you have?
Corey, Corey really hasn't been involved as much in the, the elevations and buyouts. That's Jeffrey Jerry and his staff. Um, again, the, the buyouts and the, the, the properties that are eligible for the, uh, elevations have been identified specifically by address. The owners have been contacted. Um, and it's, at this point, we are awaiting very clear, concise direction from the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency and through the CDVG programs on exactly how to administer those programs. As soon as we get that information from the state, we will share that with the individuals who have been selected. Uh, and I don't know if you had anything else to add, Jeff, but that's, that's pretty much the, uh, where, where things are standing now.
Are you talking about the, the 19 ones that was?
Correct.
Selected for elevation?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm talking about for as the buyouts concern. Have you received any, any other information on buyouts?
No, nothing. Mark said is, is absolutely, uh, correct. But what we have done is we issued an, an RFP for consultant services to assist us with those administering those programs. We got two responses. Uh, we ranked those responses just the other day. Uh, so we will be moving forward with selecting a consultant to help us and get in front of this, um, and cause, um, that consultant will be paid through the, the money that comes down from FEMA. So it's no out of pocket. Um, it's reimbursable essentially from, uh, from FEMA for that effort to get that thing moving forward. So that's, well, that was what the, um, that was the state's recommendation to us a long time ago. This was the second or third time that we went out to RFP to try to get people interested. Um, through our efforts with the Duffy Field project, we, um, were talking to those consultants and, um, talked to them specifically about this other project to help us out with the FEMA, with the elevations, the 404 and the 407. I forget the numbers at this point in time, but I think that's what it was. Um, so we'll be moving forward with that. Um, uh, at least we're making some kind of progress and we'll have an advocate working with us who's familiar with the program, has worked all over the country doing the same types of things. So we should be able to get some traction relatively soon.
Yeah, well, well, thank you for the information because I know we still have a lot of, of our citizens here in the city that is really, when it gets time for hurricane season come about and they're still, you know?
Sure.
In a position where they may be flooded again, they would get, get a little anxious and I just want the public to be updated and be aware of what we as a city is still constantly trying to do for them. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the only other thing I, I had was, uh, with Corey or with Mr. Stevens, on our grid system itself, some of the resiliency that we, we've worked on and have gotten some funding for, um, are there any opportunities under that? I, I've read it, but I didn't really see in detail. Are there any other revenue sources, funding sources for resiliency as far as elevating transformers, um, in, in other things in New Bern as far as storm preparation? Have you, do, do we know of any other funding sources to continue to work on resiliency within our grid?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're looking at, at, at grant opportunities. Uh, we're looking at, I mean, if there's any resources that you're aware of, I'm sure you do.
I, I know that we spoke to the utilities department and, and put in a, a request to them for any projects that they, uh, thought, uh, might be cost effective, uh, to mitigate. Uh, and, and again, under the, the public assistance 406 program, you have to first have, you know, damages to a particular element. And then it, it has to be cost effective to mitigate that element. And the, the cost effective can be up to 200 and And the cost effective can be up to 250% of the cost. But at this point in time, we had not received back a, was it a few?
There was a few, but they weren't costing.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
One more question on Cory. So I just want you to reiterate on it before we proceed on with this tonight. The company DRS,
Yes, ma'am.
your estimated project cost is $1.9 million, and you did say that that is covered, those costs will be covered under the FEMA funding that we receive from the city receives.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, based upon the projected, I I have gone over a very long spreadsheet with the with the city manager that talked about the highs and the lows. You have the 61 million that's projected to be received from FEMA. However, that's a reimbursement program, and exactly how much is it going to cost you to do that? Would it, would it be somewhere between 51 and 61 or whatever? So we've ran the highs and the lows, and the the projected management cost came out somewhere between three and a half and two and a half million dollars. And so the 1.95 part, yes, in answer to your question, is is fully covered under the project management cost. And what our intention now is, is to further document the city's management costs in managing the grant forward to use up the rest of the money.
Can I ask a question in regards to that, then, Mary? This is really for you. So by adopting this resolution, do we have to set up a line item? I mean, because in essence, we have to pay it, no?
I mean, you're, you're committing to allocating to adjust their contract to pay it, but it's being paid for through our FEMA fund that we have, our, I guess, whatever that we've already set up.
I know we have to set up a project, you know.
No, we've already got that set up. It's been set up.
It's already set up, and it just goes into that general amount. So this is in a separate budget.
Under the, under the new, and again, FEMA changed the program again recently this year, they have gone to strictly a management cost, and the percentage is 5% of the of the total eligible damages, less insurance proceeds, and those are the projections that we that we ran out so as to make sure that we we didn't cost the city any money.
Cory, one thing, would you please give us an update on the park and recreation, the docks and the piers and stuff? Do you think that those, that we'll be ready to have those things complete before the season gets here, before summer gets here? I get a lot of questions just because I'm, I do a lot of fishing and stuff.
I can answer that, because Cory's process is more about the recovery.
Paying for it.
Foster is.
I was looking for Foster. I thought I saw.
Foster has already bid out that work. Right now, a lot of that is tied up in availability of marine contractors.
Okay.
And I think we've had proposals out there. We've got some quotes and bids that are out there. We've got the quotes in. It's just a matter of getting people in here to do it.
And and we're going to mitigate that as well, correct?
Some of it, yes. Some of it, no. We are restricted with regards to what we can do in certain instances because of it being in a historic district with what you can do to the piers. The static portion of the pier dock down at Union Point Park, it can actually be constructed back using the hog slat, I think, material that we have. So hopefully, we won't have any problem with that. But the floating parts that go out to the boats will still have to remain as as a, as a wooden, I guess, construction because essentially it doesn't meet the code to put in the hog slat.
I believe the answer would be is that wherever it has been feasible or anything that we can think of to mitigate it, we have put in for it or are going to put in for it. I know I've seen a couple of proposals for the docks and the Parks and Recreation Department come across my desk. But in terms of the the actual construction part, I'd just like to remind you that they are near the coast, and that the permitting process that you need to go through for that, to make sure that you don't make a mistake and jeopardize your FEMA money, needs to be meticulous, and that can hold up projects as well.
Arnold McKenzie.
And we've been talking about doing a lot of the ditches, but the larger canals, it's not been a lot expressed about those there. So how would that be approached in constructing that site there? It's not a lot been said about that.
The larger canals are going to be dredged out or dug up with with silt, just like a small ditch would. The intent is to start at the mouth of the discharge of whatever drainage basin it is and work our way up the system all the way to where it ends, and getting as much mucked out and restoration and permanent repair work done as we can. So the process really is, is no different. There's complexities that are outlined as far as the methodologies in which the contractor will utilize, whether that is a barge system, whether that's with, you know, matting to be able to get into areas that may be, you know, wet or moist or or things where they would have difficulty getting in with certain equipment. And that's part of the the importance of, well, quite frankly, it's your next item on the agenda, which is the importance of having the engineers come in so that they can identify the needed resources and the way in which you're going to come in and construct and repair some of the both CAT A work, which is the debris management portion of things, and the CAT D work, which is the permanent work items. That's where they're going to come in, providing those recommendations based on their professional expertise, their skills, and then outline those methodologies for the contractor to utilize. So that's really more of how things are going.
If the city entity qualifies.
It is, and it's quite simple to say we're going to turn around and dig out the ditches, but unfortunately, it's a lot more complicated than that. There's the access to it. They're all obviously in wetland areas. Some of them are near coastal areas. Some of them are actually classified as your blue line streams, which which come under the regulation of another federal agency, and you have to worry about fish and wildlife. So.
And corrosion.
Yeah, and erosion and sedimentation while you're doing the process. So that is why the engineering firm was retained to take that responsibility entirely off of the city's back and and put it on them to figure out and to make sure that there's 100% environmental compliance with all these so that none of the FEMA funding is jeopardized.
And I just want to make sure and make a point so that we set realistic expectations here. This is, this is not going to be done next month. It's not going to be done six months. It's probably going to be more in the 12 to 18 month range of getting this completed by the time you get through all the permitting processes. I mean, obviously, we're going to start in sections where we know we can get started in, but there's some of these areas that are going to be very complex with regards to exactly what Cory was talking about with wetlands and wildlife and game and things you got to deal with, mitigating those processes, easements if necessary, all those different things. So I don't want to, I want to set realistic expectations that we're not going to go dig out 66 or 80 miles of ditches, and we're going to be done in six months. That's not going to happen. I don't want to set those expectations. Now, we will work as expeditiously as possible to get through the process. We're doing the engineering identification work now, all of that stuff. But I want to make sure to set realistic expectations that it is not going to happen in that quickly of a matter.
And something else.
It takes a very detailed, very.
And I would like to see an evaluation of what it would take to maintain that once it's done as well, because once it's all done, then it comes in maintaining, and that's going to be another big project there as well.
It is, and and the maintaining, the maintaining or the continued maintaining of it is part of the of the long-term process here to be able to to leave the access points that are that are going to be made this time to clean it out available to the city. And and on another note, as we've had many meetings recently with the engineering firm to to make sure that they're going in the in the direction that the city wants, and that direction right at the moment is, they are going to work on the sedimentation removal part of it. That is going to be their main focus at this point in time. And their instructions have have been given to to select the the areas that will require the least amount of permitting, if if any permitting. Some of it, we think, may be done with, under a general permit from the Army Corps, which would be easy to obtain. And and they have been instructed to to try to break these projects up into cost effective, manageable projects so that they can be submitted out in in smaller bid packages, which will also encourage local participation and local contractors to be able to bid on them. So that's the general direction of where they're going in now, and that was the direction that we, that Montane and myself gave to them.
Ms. McKenzie, you bring up also a very valid point, and I just want to, I just want to piggyback on what Cory had said. Some of the most, I guess, important questions that FEMA asks you, leading up to the point where you get obligated money for reimbursement, is give us your maintenance records. Because if you haven't been maintaining the properties, then they can deobligate or, you know, deny your request for the grants. So therefore, the worst thing that we could do is come in here and get, you know, 60, 80 miles of ditches done and then not maintain them, and we have another storm 20 years from now, and that storm, and we can't produce records that we're maintaining that stuff on a regular basis, because if we don't, if we can't produce that, there's a very strong likelihood that they could potentially not obligate the funds for future dig outs and clear outs. So it's a very good point.
And and we have been able to demonstrate them, that you did maintain them at this point in time, and you do have a budget of dedicated money that goes to them. You know, whether that needs to be increased or decreased as a result of this project, when it, when it gets all done, that will be, I'm sure, another matter to be evaluated. But as he said, it is very important to maintain them so that when you have, you know, an event like this in the future, you can receive funding for it, because FEMA doesn't like to pay for non-maintained waterways.
Do you want to make a motion? Yes, I would. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving an amendment to a letter of engagement for professional services with DRS LLC. Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing on this several roll calls, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, question. I do want to thank Chief Astor, Alderman Astor, for all his hard work.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't think anybody knows how much work Alderman Astor's put in to to all of these things since the hurricane hit. I know he might have kicked me out of the car that day when we got out to turn that water meter off. Remember that? Oh, yeah. I do remember. The water, the stench of that water was so bad, so ringing, Bobby might wouldn't let me get back in the car.
And I would like to echo that. He has been a very valuable resource to us with his knowledge of history of the city and and previous FEMA assistance. And thank you very much for renewing the contract. I look forward to finishing this off with the city. It's been a pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you, Cory. And Sam. Let's go to item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is a resolution approving a contract with Draper Aiden for professional engineering services for category A identification work. As you know, the city has been working with Disaster Recovery Services, who's here with us tonight, to have FEMA accept an estimated $32 million project to repairs the city's drainage system resulting from damages sustained during Hurricane Florence. We have developed an RFQ that's been issued for engineering services, and from the responses received, Draper Aiden was determined to be the most qualified firm to perform phases two and four of the project, which covers further detailed inspection and design work related to category A projects. Cost of the contract shall not exceed $850,000. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Mr. Montane. We're happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a contract with Draper Aiden for professional engineering services for category A identification work.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing on this several roll calls, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries on number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15, very similar to the last item you just approved. This is a resolution approving a contract with Draper Aiden for professional engineering services for category D design work. Keep in mind, category D is for the permanent work. This, we've issued the RFQ as required for engineering services. Draper Aiden, once again, was deemed to be the most qualified firm to perform phase three of the project, which covers design work related to these permanent work repairs. The phase of the project will be invoiced based on time and material rates, and there's a memo that's included in your packet, which also includes the information with regards to that time and materials. Happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution adopting the contract with Draper Aiden for professional engineering services for CAT D design work.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing on this several roll calls, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries on number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 16 is an amendment to Capitol Project Ordinance for the Mark Marietta Park Project Fund. As you all will recall, the city was awarded a grant from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund for park improvements associated with Mark Marietta Park Phase One project. The amount of the award was $475,000. This ordinance acknowledges receipt of the grant and establishes a necessary budget so that Foster can continue to do the fantastic things over at Mark Marietta Park that he needs to do. So happy to answer any questions. Or Ms. Hogan, happy to answer any questions regarding finance.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt an amendment to the Capitol Project Ordinance for Mark Marietta Park Project Fund.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing on this several roll calls, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries on number 17.
Thank you, Mayor. Our final business item tonight is, I'm sorry, is an ordinance establishing the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund. So as you know, this Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Project Fund establishes a necessary budget of $140,000, which you just previously approved for Moffett Nickel to perform that work. Various grants totaling $88,000 have been received to date, proceeds of which will be used towards development of the Citywide Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan. The remaining $52,000 will be a transfer from the general fund, but I will tell you that we will not need that.
Did we get the rent?
But I am not able to announce what that is, and we will do that when the appropriate time comes, and we're allowed an opportunity to.
Okay.
So are you saying that this resolution includes appropriating the $52,000 or does not include appropriating?
This, this motion will approve us establishing the fund.
Okay.
If we need it, which hint, hint, we won't need it. It allows us the opportunity to have that set aside budgetarily, but if we don't need it, it will not be used in this particular instance.
But this motion approves $52,000 transfer from the general fund?
In order for us to establish the fund, we want to fully fund so that we can do $140,000. Right now, we've got $88,000 received. We will be receiving more grant funds. It is hopeful, almost guaranteed, that we will not receive, I mean, we would not need another $52,000 from the general.
Awesome.
Trying to say it.
Before we, you know, before we're in discussion, does anybody want to make a motion? I do have a comment or a question.
Yeah, I make the motion to adopt an ordinance establishing the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Fund Project.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Anybody have a discussion?
Mayor, you discuss.
You know, I'm very remiss as an elected official that I at least didn't express my, the concerns that I get daily from the public about another item that came out the last couple of weeks, and that was noise. And I certainly do wish that I personally had at least reached out to give my two cents worth about noise in New Bern. And having learned from that, this is such an important item for New Bern and for our county, I would like to ask the board to consider that when these representatives come, that we hold a workshop and allow public comment, get started on this the right way from the beginning, gives this as an opportunity to be heard, groups an opportunity to be heard, Alderman an opportunity to ask questions, to make sure that when this end product is completed, that it's a good product, and not something that we have to shagran, that we left something out on and it's too late.
I totally agree with that, Mayor, and would support that. I think it's an excellent idea.
I agree.
I think the more citizen input we can have, they can understand that we're all in this together, and that, you know, we're trying to get resources to look at the future of New Bern and what happens during a hurricane, how we can protect ourselves better, and what we need to do. So I, I believe that would be a great opportunity for us to start it off on the right track from the minute these people hit, hit the ground running.
I would like state, state representatives, state senators.
I'd like to invite the counties as well. I see County Commissioner Sampson with us this evening, and earlier we talked with Cory. We really need this evening, and earlier, we talked with Cory, we really need to be embracing the county as well with this, because you can't draw the line where New Bern starts, the city limits, and, you know, what could be the county or another municipality, because, you know, Trent Woods was hit as hard as River Bend was hit, as Fairfield Harbor was hit, and what we find in resiliency here will impact everybody else. So I would like, I hope, Mr. Sampson, you could take that back to the county board and ask that they work with us on that too, because it's going to impact all of us.
Yeah, and I piggyback off what you say, Alderman Bingle, because, you know, our citizens here in the city, they pay city taxes, but they pay county taxes as well, so that's a benefit of service there. I feel that our citizens need some of that service from the county.
Okay. Any other discussion? And Madam Clerk, we did have a motion and a second, is that correct? At this time, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, item number sixteen, is that correct?
Eighteen.
I'm sorry.
Can I ask you a question about its appointments? Can I ask you a question? Madam Clerk, it's just saying the board is asked, so it's not a specific appointment for these, it's just a board appointment. That's correct. Okay.
Well, let's go ahead to appointments.
Yeah, so I would like, I would like to reappoint James Dugan to the Appearance Commission. I make a motion that we reappoint James Dugan, which was A on our agenda.
Aye, second, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, say, motion carries. Alderman Bingle, you have any?
I don't have anything, anything else.
Alderwoman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor, not tonight.
Okay. Alderman Astor?
Nothing.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Odom?
Just a question for clarification in our package, there's a letter from ECC. Is this letting us know that we have an appointment to the Board of Directors available?
What does that mean? I have that question as well, because Alderman Kinsey, are you not our representative?
I am.
So is your appointment up? Is that what it is, or?
I, I think that's what it is.
It talks about they've changed the bylaws, and they're adding people to the Board of Directors, so I don't know, maybe?
They've established, the way I understand it is, they've established an executive board. Because of our population, there is an executive board seat that is available. I can find out more details, or have Ms. Bordeaux come to speak to y'all, or give you some details about it, but?
So it's an addition to our regular seat?
I don't know that for sure. I'll try to find out the details of whether that is specifically a reappointment, which will also include a specific seat on the executive board, or if that is an additional seat. So let me, let me follow up with Ms. Bordeaux and see, she had indicated in her email that she was very, she very much wanted us to have that appointment and participation, because it is going to be an executive board seat. So make sure and please keep that in mind, because they did do some bylaw changes and restructure the way they're going to have things done. And I think it's more to give an opportunity for, say, the New Berns, which contribute a significant amount more money towards the Eastern Carolina cog, and the things that we do, more so than your smaller communities, and it's kind of, I would say, almost like a weighted system, kind of like Electric City's has, based on your, your population, based on your, your consumption of power within the organization. So it basically provides an executive seat, is the way I understand it. But I'll find out some more information.
Any other appointments tonight?
I got a question. On this letter from Brenda, we talk about Foster Hughes has someone that's interested in serving on the board. Can we not appoint that person tonight, or is he gone? What's the process?
No, you can. I just didn't share the information as to the name, because I didn't have it. Didn't know if you wanted to reach out to him and talk with him about the person.
But we can?
Because that board does have certain qualifications some of the members have to have.
If I might add, I'm waiting for the resume, because normally, we'll send a resume, that way you can look at that.
Okay, thank you.
I think what it's important to note, it might be a good opportunity, just if anybody's interested in serving on the Appearance Commission, and it's, you'd like to have people with background, maybe in horticulture, or gardening, or of that matter. If you would please send your resume to our city clerk, or to Parks and Rec Department, and then they can forward it on to us. So it'd be good to let the citizens know we are looking for members to serve on the board. I believe we're going to have two open seats on that? Two open seats. Thank you.
Any other appointments? Attorney's report?
It's important, Mayor.
City manager's report?
I have two real quick items, if you don't mind, Mayor. One is more of a, just to kind of update, I know Stanley White has been something that has been kind of discussed at length. Just wanted to give you a real quick update, that we have executed and signed our acceptance of the offer for 428 mitigation. I think it was a little over eight million dollars, I think was the total number. The funding coming from FEMA, less the insurance, less the state's funding, is another number. I think it was in the five-point-something range, but essentially, you've got to back out all those things that we have. But we have executed that. It's still in FEMA's hands in their process, but ultimately, it's starting to get to the bottom of the hill on the backside, is what I'm saying, and so hopefully, that's a good thing. We'll be seeing those funds once FEMA finishes that, will be obligated, and then we'll be moving forward with certain things. The other item is Alderman Astor had sent an email from an individual, asking about some things that they had heard through the grapevine, with regards to Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point exercising more, I guess, practice in traffic over at our regional airport, when times allow for them to do so. We did get a response back from the Cherry Point, and they are going to be doing some practice, so with the Harriers, the Harrier jets, that'll be utilizing the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport for some refueling and temporary parking beginning March the thirteenth, 2020. This activity will support pilot training, which generally occurs over the weekend. There's not going to be a significant number of increase in flights into and out of New Bern's airport, but they did want to make sure that they understand that they will be flying in and out of there a little bit more. Military aircraft currently utilize it in other general aviation airports within Eastern North Carolina for some practice. Recently, they've been using Wilmington as kind of an opportunity for them to do that. I think they utilize other airports throughout Eastern North Carolina. But the advantages of doing it here include reduced costs associated with mileage and lodging, and meals, and travel time, and so forth and so on. So just wanted to make sure and let that be known to our public, that there may be some, some, some noise, that they have been instructed to use, I forget exactly what the wording of it is, I think it's noise mitigation profile, but to try to reduce the amount of noise that they'll be creating as they fly in and out of the airport. So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and we did get that notice from the people at MCS Cherry Point, and we'll, we'll get that notice in our information on the website, so that people know, as well as our social media accounts.
Well, Mark, was that also, are they here practicing, I think, one time last week and one time this week? The explosion was really loud.
It's Martin Marietta.
That was Martin Marietta?
Yeah, Martin Marietta was the explosions they were doing, as they typically do anytime you have a quarry, they have to do some explosions to release the aggregate, so that they can continue to break it down further, so that was what that was. With regards to the things at the airport, I mean, I see it on a continual basis, you'll see the fixed rotor, and you'll also see the Ospreys coming in and landing and doing some practice runs, but just, just know that now they're going to do some Harrier approaches, there'll probably be minimal, but they wanted to make sure and let the citizens know.
That was extremely loud, I mean, it sounded like cannons, and it sounded like it was right behind my home, and my cat almost hit me.
It is.
No, I mean, literally, it sounded like it was right behind my home, I know it's out in it.
Well, with the cloud cover, it makes it so much louder. Mark, do you know if they're going to do this just in the daytime, or will there be any nighttime?
Great question. I don't know that they specifically laid that out in here. They did talk about there would not be a significant number of flights, but that it generally occurs over the weekend to support pilot training. So I do not know whether that'll be happening over the weekend in the evenings or not, but it doesn't specifically outline that.
Thank you.
Anything else, starting with the city manager's report?
That's it for me tonight.
To start out new business, I would like to say, mention something that, that I want to start mine out early, so that if anybody wants to chime in, you can do it. We're all concerned about the public and the safety of our citizens, and Mr. Rosieri, would you come up and, can you give us an update on the preservation management repairs being made currently to Craven Terrace? There's quite a bit, are you, they permit, there's quite a bit of construction over there right now, and I just want the public to be aware that preservation management is totally on top of their game, of making sure that the citizens are safe, and that the units they are in are code compliant, and so there's just quite a bit, if you're running around, you see, you'll see four or five area lifts over there right now, and a lot of, there's actually a quarantine area where it looks like a whole building, so are you?
I don't have any details, but I'll get on in the morning, I'll send you an email.
That's okay, I just, one reason I wanted to mention that is that overall, even though with anything, when you do that major renovation, there can be some issues, it just so, it is so disappointing to me for the citizens of our city to run around Trent Court, and as of today, run around, and there's four or five air conditioning units that are elevated off the ground to stay out of harm's way for floods, and they're about to tip over, and some young child is going to go over there, and things are going to fall over on somebody. And there are a lot of very dangerous situations over there, and, you know, our city can do better than this, but the citizens, for the most part, are normally not aware that that's not a city function. So I just want to publicly express my total dissatisfaction for the management and what's going on in there, and I know there's a hundred excuses for why things are the way they are, but still, you know, the safety of our citizens, we can do better than that. And when I look at, if anybody in the public wants to go out there and look at it, and you see the total budget of the New Bern Housing Authority, which actually has nothing to do with the city of New Bern, other than the mayor making the appointments, and you see the amount of overhead for, for two hundred units, it's, you'll shake your head like I do, and I just say this to say, we can do better. I don't want no workshop meeting. I know that they're waiting on HPC for the medallions, I know all these procedural things that are going on, but I don't think a mayor or an Alderman should have to sit here and talk about these things. Just anybody on the management staff that's on the commission board that are appointing, it just looks like I just arrived through, you would say, we need to get this thing fixed today. So the solutions I have are to bring it under the city and New Bern. If we can't immediately get some checks and balances, is how we can do better for the safety of our citizens. That's my comment, so we'll start with Alderman Odom.
Okay. Couple of things, as far as the coronavirus goes, I just wanted to let everyone know that if you feel like you're having those symptoms, to please contact the Health Department, don't go to the emergency room, because if you do happen to be infected, you don't want to infect everybody in the emergency room, so that's been the direction that's been given, and you'll probably see some more information coming out on that, but just to let you know, the test, I was told this morning, that Craven County is only going to get a ration of three tests for the entire county. So it's very important that we are cautious, but we're not in panic mode. Second comment, it's my annual plea to candidates who both won and lost, to please get your signs. I don't understand why someone who runs for office takes all the time out to put campaign signs all over the place, that are, most of them are very illegally, to begin with, if we're being honest about it, to please get them up. I'm certainly not going to name names tonight, but hopefully, by the next time we have a meeting, those signs will be gone. I was going to make another comment, Mayor, about hysteria and social media, and there's a process for handling complaints and issues versus handling it the way some people choose to do this day and age, but I'll just let it go at that, that you have elected representatives that I'm sure are more than willing to speak with individuals if they have concerns, that you don't have to go with the media hype of social media today. Does nothing productive, but causes a lot of grief and headache, and it puts a lot of blame on people that's not responsible for things. So unfortunately, people look to the city, and they think that we have certain powers to do certain things, when in fact, our powers are very limited by this constitution of the state of North Carolina. But unfortunately, general public doesn't understand that, and when people decide to, you know, be a social media star, if you will, causes a lot of distrust with your local elected officials, so that's all, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Well, I'll just piggyback off of what Alderman Odom just stated, but I'm going to come right out and point-blank say it. I have received so many phone calls and emails about the sweet potatoes over in Craven Terrace, and I, you know, I've informed our citizens that Craven Terrace is a private-owned apartment complex, that there's certain things a city cannot do, we are governed by law and ordinances, and that it's left up to the private owner of that business to handle. So Mr. Stevens, I contact you today. If you can, please briefly give the public your view, or Mr. Jeffrey Gary, what laws that we have to comply with, with getting a problem on public property cleaned up.
Potato gate?
Potato gate.
Yeah, potato gate, sorry. So yes, a private property, a, I guess, public nonprofit coordinated with one another to do this, they do it every year, I guess there's manners and ways people are appreciating the way it was done, the city had nothing to do with it, and I will say that, what I understand, and Matt, I had Matt look into some of this stuff, I believe, all, everything is gone at Craven Terrace. Once they started catching wind, that there was a lot of grief out there, the organization that tried to provide these went out there and picked them up. My understanding is there is a secondary location that's located at a church, I don't know that it's been cleaned up, but once again, it's a church's property, and it's between the church and the nonprofit. The city didn't deliver them, and the city didn't necessarily, I don't think should be responsible for picking them up, unless they are in violation of some code or ordinance, and then at that point, I'd have to defer to staff, because honestly, we're researching that, if we have to go that route and start doing fines and penalties, but anytime we have those kind of things, it usually involves fine, notification that they're in violation, fines and penalties, once a certain period goes, that they have been found to be incompliant, and then at that point, the penalties will incur, and at that point, once, if the penalties incur, and they don't comply with that, then at that point, we come in and do whatever we got to do. That's typically the process.
Thank you. I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Bingle.
Yes, Matt, and yourself, and I, we was out, I think it was last week, looking around, and on racetrack road, we have a problem with traffic and buses coming together, and I'd like to know if we can look at, seeing how much would it cost, to look at, what can we do to fix that problem?
What else you got, sir?
Sir?
What else you got?
And the, and the, that drainage, that problem that we have on Colony and News Boulevard, with that cove that has caved in, meeting with DOT, setting up an appointment with them to find out when can we start to working on that, because it's, it's just, it's beginning to cave in more and more. So, and the sidewalks from Elizabeth Avenue to the bridge, because we have a lot of people that's walking in the street, going to the college every day. So we have two big hazards, three hazards.
Two, two things I'll just chime in on, on the racetrack road, if you want to get with the NPO staff, I know that there's a project under review for where racetrack road meets News Boulevard.
I know that there's a project under review for where racetrack road meets Neuse Boulevard to help realign that. We could check and see what the status of that is. It may be something could be done in conjunction with that. And as far as the sidewalks, I get that complaint or recommendation as well about connecting the Elizabeth Avenue, basically where the fire station is, over to Craven Community College. Keep in mind that the overpass will be eliminated and demolished and replaced because it does not meet the height for the interstate standards, but I don't know if we could look at the sidewalks to the bridge and after the bridge to help with that access.
What else you got, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Not a thing tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderwoman Harris?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's the echo that's getting me. I just wanted to basically comment and agree to what Alderman Oden said. You know, I understand, I apologize, I am not there, I am in DC. Although I'm not there, I am advocating for the city of New Bern. You know, there's a proper way to go about reaching, you know, the board of Alderman. Anyone that's available via phone or email, please reach out to us. Again, I appreciate the city and the mayor and everybody standing up and making a statement on Facebook and letting everybody know about the Sweet Potatoes. Again, when I get back, I would like to be able to come together with the community and figure out a better process that, that will work because there's a lot of outcry that people, you know, they really enjoyed having that there and being able to have this type of resources. Yes, we understand that the, the way that it was done is now no longer something that's acceptable for the citizens and they have voiced their opinion and I, and I want to take that all into consideration and work with whoever we need to, to make the process better. But overall, I don't really have anything else to say. I just appreciate everybody's comments on this situation that was going on.
Well, thank you, Alderwoman Harris, and have a safe trip on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Alderman Bingle?
Couple of things. Mr. Montane, the traffic study on Second Spencer, that, that area, where are we at with that? How much longer is that going on? Our citizens are not happy in Ghent.
As you're aware, we did start the traffic study last week. We put them up on Friday. We started the count on, at midnight on Saturday morning and we ran them till this, through this weekend. So, we, yesterday morning, we went and pulled all the traffic counters. I just happened to be preoccupied today, so was not able to download the data, but my goal is to get all the data downloaded this weekend, try to get you some type of outcome of what we, at least a, at least a traffic count by the end of the week and then from there, kind of where the traffic's going once they get on Second Avenue.
And Chief, I want to thank you and the police staff. I want you to know that tons of cars, lots of cars are going through the stop signs there on Second and Spencer and the police have stepped up their presence. We have residents there who have video and are catching people in violation of trucks going through and whatever. And the people in Ghent on Second and they want a safe area, they're stepping up their game and we, as a board of Aldermen, are going to hear from them again because they are concerned about this neighborhood, the traffic. Now they have videos, they've got, they're, you know, running the cameras every day, getting, getting the information. And the police department has been out there. I don't know how many tickets have been written in chief. Maybe we can include that when we get the traffic studies, we can include the information about how many citations were issued, what they're finding as a result of, of being out there and seeing people go through the stop signs, but somebody's going to get hurt and I want to stop it before there is a tragedy. So, as soon as we get that information, I want to pass it out. Thank you. And then the last thing I want to say is that this is the week for the North Carolina Main Street Conference. New Bern's very fortunate to be hosting this. I want to thank Lynn Hericell with Swiss Fair, who is the host committee here. This is the 40th anniversary of the Main Street program in the state of North Carolina. New Bern was one of the first in the nation, as well as the state, to join into this program in 1980 and the result has been, you know, almost $340 million of investment in our downtown area, producing, you know, economic development and growth, estimated, you know, thousands of jobs and all of that. And we've got people from across our state here. It's been wonderful, all the people I met today while I was out at the convention center. You know, we have mayors and elected officials and city managers and tourism officials and people who work in this industry every day in our community. And it was really great to see our, our city alive with people in it. The registration is over 750 people and it's just good we're back and it's really the first big conference that the city of New Bern has hosted. So, as you see the people out and about in our city, please welcome them and let them know how much we appreciate them being here. Tomorrow, the city will be hosting a luncheon for mayors and other city officials, as well as city managers here at City Hall, just to welcome them and say thank you for visiting in our city. So, I just want everybody to know about that.
Do you have an update on the Doubletree?
You know, the Doubletree right now, we continue to get updates at TBA, potentially the end of June, but again, that is a very fluid date and they're not taking any bookings until 21, sometime in 21, but they say they're going to be open in 20. That's all I know.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else on our new business? Do we need a closed session tonight?
We do, Mayor, to discuss several matters. One pursuant to 143 318 11A5, the potential acquisition of several parcels of real estate. The second matter is pursuant to 143 318 11A4, the discussion of potential economic development incentives for a business to locate to our area.
Okay.
Somebody?
Motion and second is their discussion. See you none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We'll go into closed session.
Are we going to the other one?